All this regular city council meetings were ordered. Today is Thursday, September 25th, 2025 and it is 5:30 PM. At this time we're going to have an invocation by Councilwoman Arona and the pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Tricia.
I want to say a little prayer from Saint Michael the Archangel. Today's situations, our world is kind of getting bleak. It's always hard at this time for me to share each other's feelings, believe in each other's faiths, whatever that means, and pray to God that he brings us all together and to understand that we will not always understand each other, but we will respect each other in our thoughts. Saint Michael the Archangel, defend us in battle. Be our protection against the wickedness and snares of the devil. May God rebuke him. We humbly pray and do thou, O prince of the heavenly host, by the power of God cast unto hell Satan and all the evil spirits who prowl above the world seeking the ruins of souls. In the name of God, Holy Name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you have your cell phone, please put it on silent. I will open the floor for public comments. Just as a reminder, this is a time for residents to share with the council any comments, concerns or complaints that they may have. It is asked that each person limit their time to three minutes as we do have several scheduled agenda items. And for record-keeping purposes, we ask that you please stand at the podium and state your name for the record. Are there any public comments?
I'm dropping community services director. I would like to note publicly that unfortunately our splash pad is closed for the season. We had a major equipment failure that will not be able to be at a time when we get it back open before the end of September. We apologize for inconvenience, but welcome everyone out next year to enjoy the new seasonal day. Thank you.
Mayor Council Lisa Paramo, Chief of Police. Really, I just wanted to acknowledge the community itself of how they showed up in a big way today for the fundraiser we had for our officer who was struggling with cancer. And not only was it Reeves and the City of Pecos, Loving County and Ward County also had representatives that all showed up for our fundraiser. And not only was it the community, which people are real quick to criticize, but when it's times like this, they show up in a very big way. So thank you.
I wish I'd known about it. I didn't. I would have probably come too. But anyway, I've got what I wanted to talk about. Oh, wow, I didn't realize you were having a fundraiser.
Yes, sir. We tried to publish it best we could on Facebook. It was on Channel 7 News. The newspaper, it had been published the best that we could, so. It's okay. I knew that you guys are busy, you know, but the community just really, they stepped up in a really big way, really two weeks in a row. And city employees, not just at the police department, but here at City Hall, everybody just kind of jumped in and helped wherever they could. EST was right on board, you know, everybody just, it was a good day. So thank you.
I do want to say that, no, it's not. I take my dogs out on the weekends for about three mile run. And I was talking to somebody the other day and they said they jog around the cemetery. And so we started doing that. And, you know, it's amazing. There's people that I hadn't thought about for ages. And what I really want to say is that, you know, that cemetery is a magnet. Y'all would tell the people that over there, tell them that they did a great job that they're doing. And I was very, very impressed. I think I saw one plot with one knee on it, so that was it. And it's like they do it evenly too, you know. I'm sure there's some families that have gone, long gone, you know, come back to check on. But everything, you know, they live in some foreign country like Louisiana or Oklahoma. Anyway, I'm very, very impressed with that. Tell them that.
Are there any other public comments?
Yes ma'am. Heather Ramirez, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to invite the public out on Tuesday, September 30th, from 6:00 to 7:30 up to our Bessie Williams gym. It'll be the public's second opportunity to give input on shaping what our Bessie Williams apartment should look like.
Any other public comments? Okay, at this time we're going to go to executive session under Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.087, economic development. And it is 5:36.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We're going to go ahead and go to item F11, presentation of the implementation progress of Goal 7 of the Town of Pecos City 2030 strategic plan. Goal 7 enhances Pecos' infrastructure network and help him reach the director of public works. He heard his name.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, Kelvin Ridge, Director of Public Works. What you have in front of you is a device that will allow us to detect leaks and stolen water in our well field. Right now, we do not have anything that detects that, so this is the technology. No, I thought we were on goal two. Sorry. I'm ready.
They went to have some luck.
Oh good, let's go. Goal 7, Kelvin Ridge, and here's my team, Josh, Bianca, and the entire Pecos staff. Infrastructure improvement. The fire hydrant assessment that we've been talking about is in motion. Right now, we're putting in valves, we're working with Barmore, so that is near completion. Right now, we're probably about 25% complete on that project. The meter replacement, we're probably at about 50% completion, probably about 55% on the meter replacement. Sewer lift stations will be going out to bid any day, all of the contracts are available by Parker and returned to Wendy to move forward. Coordination with Teck Scott, Third Street improvements are going pretty good. I think the road is looking like we thought it would look from the beginning. You know, there was some time where we were kind of unsure about how things were going. The communication plan has been really good, the traffic reroutes, we haven't had many hiccups with that. Everything has been pretty good. Those guys have been communicating, and we meet every Wednesday at 2:00 to talk about anything that we may need to change moving forward. Provide sustainable water. The NBR treatment plant is probably about 80% complete, that's going really well. We're going through a punch list right now to shore up some things which will increase water supply. The yard meter situation is going a whole lot better. We made some updates, started flying to make sure that we're more transparent with customers so that they understand exactly what they're giving and what they're paying for. As explained to you maybe about two weeks ago, we talked about Barmore going down on the price for the customers when it's time for those to be tested, the backflow preventers are required to be tested. The leak detection, which is what I was about to explain to you earlier, is what we'll talk about at some point tonight. Develop Pecos equally. The citywide pressure phase one, those guys will mobilize mid-October, so around October 15th to 20th, they'll be on ground to start that process now that the surveying is all over. The well field project is ongoing and great position. Mr. Leon and myself met with USDA probably about a week ago to square some things away, so that's going in the right direction. so that's going in the right direction. But their valley addition is complete, now it's at the point where we need to upgrade those lines because most of the lines that we acquired are one inch, two inch, so there's not much we can do with those. So there will be something coming to you guys, look forward to that, so that we can upsize those lines, so that they're better for customers from a pressure standpoint. The addition of the prison water system is gonna help us on the other side of Pecos to give us another sixteen inch line on that side, so that's gonna be huge. The street signs are looking really, really good. We're probably about ninety-five percent complete with those. All of the signs around the schools are up, just about all the signs around the city are up, and they look wonderful. Develop the regional solid waste facility, probably about a year, I feel like I told you guys, two years, so right now, we should be at maybe about a year, two months now, left on the permitting process. We're working with Park Hill, and they're working on duration of the facility, which from my understanding should be between thirty and forty years. And they're looking at cost studies and the environmental effect right now as they're doing their studying in the plan. Improve competitive, you know, things to make Pecos more attractive, to bring businesses into the city. You know, we talked about phase one of the water pressure project that we have going on, which is gonna increase the life of Pecos, you know, we have a lot of dead end lines, and we're gonna loop all of those lines together, giving us adequate water pressure throughout the city, which I think is gonna be big. Again, the technology is the piece that I thought we were talking about. I didn't think we were at the PowerPoint piece yet, but here we are. McGuire contract is still going good, those guys are making sure that we're N T C E Q requirements with all of our tanks and our elevated towers. I'm sorry. Strategic investment, the golf course water pressure is finally up to par. I'm sure Paul, her nose is glad about that because he gave me a hard time.
Is that Paul or?
No, that's not Paul, that's David. I couldn't get Paul to take a picture with me, right? The downtown cosmetics, the new street signs downtown, the new trash cans, and then you guys approving the budget that has Oak Street renovation in it, it's gonna be huge for us. Cameras at the warehouse is something that we're still working on right now. Additional trenches in our current landfill are one hundred percent complete, so those are fully functional now.
How long will those last now?
I was told maybe about five years.
And how, and long enough for us to get the new landfill open?
Hopefully, that's our goal. If not, we'll go back to the drawing board, right? Street maintenance plan, one of the things that I'm most excited about in working with Edward and his staff is we put a pothole. This is gonna be a portal where we put a portal online, I'm sorry, and customers will have the ability to go in and give us a cross street where they see a pothole. That'll populate to an Excel spreadsheet, and it'll go on our list. And at some point, maybe about three months down the line, then we'll put something online that says the Town of Pecos has fixed two hundred potholes. And then you'll be able to see exactly when those potholes are done. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah. When we build a new landfill, twenty-four years, I wanna request some ashes to be spread.
Over the landfill?
Over the new landfill.
Sure, I'm sure Mr. Lino can make that happen.
Any other questions?
Don't say anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll go to F one, presentation of upcoming events. Goal five, promote open and consistent communication. Edward De Leon.
Mayor Council Edward De Leon, Director of Communications and Public Affairs. I'm gonna try to make this as quickly as possible, and it's getting a little late, and so I'll make sure to have this presentation for you guys as well to your emails. I'll get with Wendy. So first off, we have the Bessie Haynes Shift the Future event, of course, Heather announced that during public comments today, so that's gonna be happening on Tuesday, September thirtieth, from six P M. to seven thirty P M. at the Bessie Haynes Gymnasium, which is located at eight hundred East Eleventh Street. Again, that's gonna be on Tuesday, September thirtieth, six P M. to seven thirty, and this is a chance for our residents to provide feedback, you know, for the final, final plan. So, super exciting stuff there. Something new, we've had Code and Connect for a while, but now we're gonna have Let's Talk Trash and Code and Connect. Holly is very, very hitting this, this, this program. So again, if anyone has any questions regarding, you know, code enforcement or even the landfill, every first Friday of the month, starting Friday, October third, from eight thirty A M. to four thirty P M. here at City Hall, they can ask the questions, and then we'll have staff here to answer those questions they might have. The Food Bank, it's happening on Friday, October third, from ten A M. to twelve P M. at the Reeves County Civic Center. Every, every first Friday of each month, they're there, providing, you know, distributing, you know, fresh food and pantry items for our community. So again, super, super neat stuff. Cyclone, Cyclone's having their Oktoberfest, this is their inaugural Oktoberfest celebration, again, happening at Cyclone with live music, limited German-inspired menu and plenty of festive fun. That's happening October third through the fifth, from three P M. to eleven P M. each day, again, at Cyclone Ballpark. National Night Out, we, we are hosting this free committee event to meet and greet our, our local, county, state, law enforcement, and first responders. They'll have, we'll have vendors, music, we'll also have demonstrations, vehicle displays, and much more. So again, that's happening on Tuesday, October seventh, from six P M. to eight P M. at the Reeves County Civic Center's parking lot. Obviously, we have grown our parking lot last year, so we're just having to move to a bigger, bigger site. Waters of the West Texas Conference, so they're, they're bringing together all water leaders, landowners, and community partners for a day of inside connection and collaboration. That's gonna be happening on Thursday, October ninth, nine A M. to three P M. Reeves County Civic Center. Ms. Amber Redden is the one leading this event, and she could be reached at the Pecos Economic Development Corporation building. Alrighty, then we have a concert, Cyclone, happening on Friday, October tenth, doors opening at seven P M. Band starts playing at nine, and the headliners start at ten forty-five. And the headliners for that are Los Pescadores del Río Conchos, so that should be exciting. If anyone wants to buy some tickets, they can go visit their website at W W W dot playpecos.com. Alrighty, Paul, buy any cleanup. So, we would like to invite all the, all the community to join us, keep Pecos clean, and have a chance to earn double community service hours. We're gonna be providing gloves, vests, trash bags, and grabbers, and we're also gonna be including breakfast and lunch. Lunch will be provided by Mr. Lino. Thank you, Mr. Lino. Then we all, and then we also have the Keep Pecos Proud trophy, and your company, your organization, or even your family can, are able to win the Keep Pecos Proud trophy, which is right there on your, on the bottom right. So again, that's happening on Saturday, October eighteenth, from eight A M. to twelve P M., and we're meeting here at City Hall. Roll-off, every third Saturday of each month, we have our free roll-offs. This roll-off is happening on Saturday, October eighteenth, from eight A M. to twelve P M., and the two locations are Stafford Boulevard and Moore Street, and Stafford Boulevard and South Cactus Street. So, make sure, we want, encourage all residents to, to join us. Just because it's on the south zone doesn't mean that you can't come and put some bulky items there. Alright, Chunk of Tree and Mother Goose Parade, I know a lot of people were asking, that is hosted by the Western Pecos Museum, it's gonna be happening on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. Costume judging at five thirty P M. with the trunk or tree happening six P M. to eight P M. Again, that's gonna be happening at the Western Pecos Museum, so if anyone has any questions, please reach out to them. And we have our Merchants Halloween Town. So, we're still promoting this, and we're still having businesses sign up. So if any business is interested in handing out candy during the Merchants Halloween Town, make sure you register online by Monday, October twenty-seventh. So again, this is a chance for trick-or-treaters to kind of go around all local Pecos businesses and trick or treat, and then just expose their business a little more to, to the whole community. Again, that's happening Friday, October thirty-first, from four P M. seven P M., and again, it depends on which businesses register. Alright, here's my favorite one, Fourth Annual Five K Pink Fun Run. That's gonna be happening on Saturday, November first, starting at nine A M. at Cyclone Ballpark. Registration fees, we had to update that flyer, but it's gonna be adults twenty dollars and children for ten dollars, and it'll include a swag bag with T-shirts. So we'll be accepting registration fees on October first. And all the funds that we're gonna be getting, they're all gonna go straight to the Pecos Area Cancer Foundation. Last year, we raised over, over five thousand dollars, so we're hoping to beat that goal this year as well. And that's it. Anyone has any questions? If you always call us, Facebook, website. But yeah, that's it.
Somebody told me today that there's going to be a fall figure.
That, yeah, not, not to my knowledge.
That somebody, somebody, one of the vendors that normally comes was gonna do it themselves, but I haven't.
Oh, yeah, no, we, I haven't heard anything. Wendy, have you got an idea?
She mentioned that a part of the, part of it will be here for the toddler size kids, but there would not be an event for minors, and it's only going to be the small portion of the child. I wasn't seeing, sorry, for the stock show was going to have some form of advocacy vendor thing.
Okay, that may be what it is.
I know a lot of events happening, so.
Thank you.
We will go to item F two, discuss, consider approving the acceptance of a deed without warranty of the property purchased by the Pecos Economic Development Corporation from Dex, Techstock legally described as all of blocks seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve of block six, West Park Edition, in addition to the Town of Pecos City in Reeves County, Texas, and authorizing the city manager to transfer the deed to the Pecos Economic Development Corporation. Goal one, sustainable economic development.
I'm not Jimmy, Mayor. Mayor and Council Charles Lino, City Manager, this is a piece of property that's been available for a while. This is Techstock's old yard, it's on Second Street, a little bit further west. There was an offer that was put out that Techstock wanted to sell it, they could sell it only to a governmental entity, which we are, we are that. The E D C Board asked if we would, asked to acquire the land, and they would pay for it, they did, they went and paid a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the facility. It was fair market price, it was, it was okay. So the city acquired it through a payment of the E D C, and the E D C has plans to use it and monetize it, so I recommend that the council approve me transferring the deed, as we did. It did not cost the city anything, but we have to be the mechanism through which it was done.
And this is correctly behind Quick Stop?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Of course it's by Quick Stop?
Right behind it.
On Second Street?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right around that one, right next to the Napa.
Yes, sir. I'll make the motion that we approve, approve, approve the acceptance of the deed without warranty of the property purchased by the Pecos Economic Development Corporation. I'll second, I'll second, ma'am, for us.
We have a motion from Councilman Saldaña, a second from Councilman Barosco, to approve the acceptance of a deed as described. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F three, discuss, consider resolution forty-five dash oh nine dash oh four R, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Blackrock Automation for the purchase, installation, and calibration of transmitters for the skater system in the cost of two hundred nine thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Goal seven, enhances Pecos' infrastructure network. Kelvin Ridgeley.
Mayor Council, Kelvin Ridgeley, Director of Public Works. What you have in front of you is a device that allows us to detect leaks and stolen water for the water that's coming into the city from the wellfields. Right now, we don't have any way to detect a leak, so if there is a leak, we just gotta ride around and just kind of hope that we can find a spot. So this kind of pinpoints the area where the leak is, making us more efficient whenever there is a leak, because whenever there's a leak on the wellfield, we use a tremendous amount of water in a fast amount of time. So the faster we can get to it and find out where it is contributes to less water loss. And this is a budgeted item. We were short on the budget, I think we budgeted a hundred and thirty, but we did real, reallocate some money for a vehicle to this so we could meet the requirements.
How many of these are you purchasing?
This is just one, but it comes in eleven pieces that are gonna be strategically put in the wellfield so they can detect that area.
Are we gonna need more in the future?
No, this will cover the entire wellfield.
Is this the new wellfield or the old wellfield, all of it?
All of it, all of the transmission lines coming into the town of Pecos.
Even the new one coming in?
Yes, sir.
And part of the skater system, right?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to give those on this?
Yes.
May I make a motion, we approve, F three?
We had two bids. I think one was two ten, I think one was two oh six.
And your final decision?
I'll say again.
I have a motion from Councilman, Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldaña, to approve resolution twenty-five dash oh nine dash oh four R as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F four, discuss, consider resolution twenty-five dash oh nine dash oh five R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the scope of services of the existing agreement with fairs for professional services to include the expediting of the safety access and repair measures for the Pecos Police Department not to exceed seventy-six thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and ten cents. Goal five, go to, Safety Super City, Holly Girardi.
Mayor Council Holly Girardi, Community Services Director. In your packet is the resolution asking for emergency enclosure and repair for the Pecos Police Department. So, we started this project by removing the parafit that sat, that ran across the top portion of this building, and found that we need to increase the safety access for the police department, and this is a total cost from the previous demolition, as well as the balance to do the repair and restructuring inside.
So once we repair this, and then we decide to build a new station, we're tearing it back down, right? Where are we? I mean, I know it's not part of the deal. Hopefully, we're going to start building the architects by the end of the year, and first quarter is when we can start getting some activity.
But that's still gonna be like a two-year process, right?
And hopefully, we can get it done in eighteen months, right? Yes, ma'am.
But I know now you're entering through the back of the building.
Yes, ma'am, right now, we are entering through the west side of the building, and we have employees entering through the back, and they're just fetching the jail. So, Holly's could be really helpful to try to create a kind of makeshift parking lot on the west side of the building, although it doesn't rain very often, and it does, it still creates a problem. But we have that whole front part kind of put about right now, just for safety reasons. There's a lot of trip hazards, but whenever they had to take down the front part of that building, as far as the bar that's sticking up out of the, out of the pavement and cement, and there's just a lot of safety issues that we have, and it's gonna continue. I wish I could tell you it was gonna get better, but there's, it continues to, to have a lot of dilapidation that's going on with that building.
But this band-aid, would they, would this, this front, it's gonna, and then hopefully stay for a while?
So the front doors, we pulled all of the, the foyer out completely, that was what was mostly damaged. Found that the wall on the, that is now the exterior wall does not contain the damage, but the settling with all of the water damage that came in over the years, when they put in the new door system, had to, you know, go outside the scope of work and retrofit that door to seat properly on the lower end. So it shifted down, which they found after the fact, creating this, one of the issues that we're gonna be resolving.
It's not, y'all's office is open, but.
Um, there is a lot of damage that's done to the front part of the building, which is actually what houses the police department. And if you went to Captain Kelly's, the officials today kind of leaning over to the side, and literally, we're holding it together as best we can. The jail side, you can see, has a lot of water that comes up through the ground, and it's just, it was put on a wet surface whenever the pad is built, and it's never, it's never gained any traction. and it's never, it's never gaining any traction because of the water. At the time, we've seen, um, the settling with the foundation. And with that, we have tilted up walls. Those walls start to lean one direction or the other. We have some really big cracks and, uh, we have started to suffer some roof leaks. Uh, Team Ellis had a couple of people out to inspect the roof to see what they can do at least patch it. Because to me, it makes no sense to spend money on a new roof on a building where you're gonna tear down, uh, murder somebody in the next couple of years. It's been really a lot of discussion to even do these repairs 'cause I try to be extremely careful with the finances and I hate to put money into a building that we're gonna tear down. It's just, it's not getting torn down as good as I need it to be.
Is it safe for you guys to remain at the building? It doesn't sound like it's structurally safe and it could really hurt somebody. Is that the best thing, like, should you even stay there? Should we try to temporarily relocate somewhere?
So we're contemplating, we were contemplating that and have actually looked into temporary, um, facilities that we could place to the east of the police department to provide that. Um, we are literally in the middle of looking at that. We do have some, uh, we have touch base with the school who has portables that are coming available. So that is part of the, possibly, uh, another form of, or option to consider.
What about the prison?
The what?
The prison?
The prison, oh.
So we have looked at the prison a couple of years back and just one way that that prison is basically what we need to run the police department. Looking at the structure and how it is put together, we would have to quite do a little bit of repeated to make that something that we could sustain with for a brief amount of time. And so what it is, the, the front part, although it is really bad, we have been told that it can sustain us for at least another couple of years, at most. Of course, you'll see when you're out there in Instagram, you've been there. So you've kind of witnessed some of this the past couple of weeks. And you can see, like, the big cracks, you can see the water that comes up through the floors. And, uh, of course, the part of us and not the rest, it's either all enough in this instance, because it all, it takes it all to function, if you want. Cause you have dispatch in the very core center of that jail and you have the jail in and on the outside, you have the police department. And all of it has to kind of simultaneously work together.
This isn't going to affect our Marshall contract? Is it, would the building be maybe a hazard or something? That would be something that could potentially?
No, ma'am, it will not affect the Marshall contract. In fact, um, when I do my presentation, I'll explain to you what's happening there. Uh, we do get evaluated and inspected by them yearly where they come in. And they understand, like, the, the building's a lot better than some of the others that they go to where they're in tents, right? And so we're a little ahead of that. Although I have considered tents, right? But it's, uh, it will not affect our Marshall contract as they know that we are seeking opportunity to build a new facility.
And so this is a budgeted item using our, uh, facilities, utilizing our facilities and maintenance repair line. And that's where we had started initially and we do have the, the funds available.
May I make the motion that we approve resolution 25-09-05R?
I have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve resolution 25-09-05R as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going on to item five. Presentation of the implementa, implementation progress of goal one of the County Pecos City 2030 Strategic Plan. Goal one is sustainable economic development. Savannah Littler, who's the City District Board Director. And I understand they gave you the biggest part.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Samantha Woodward, Director of CDB, um, accompanied by Wendy Buhon, City Secretary. Um, so as mentioned, we will be presenting goal one, sustainable economic development and the update on those KPIs and goals. Um, Wendy, pass this aside, as to accompany tonight to help answer any questions that may arise throughout the presentation, but please bear with me.
All right. So moving into the presentation, we do have several joint entities in the community that we work with when we're measuring, um, these KPIs. And so they are all listed here on the screen. Would like to note, the Economic Development Corporation is a large partner in a lot of these initiatives and projects that we work on. Moving on, our goal team is listed to the left. Um, and some of the other entities and their representatives that we work very closely with as well are mentioned here. So stabilize and expand the Pecos tap space. Here, um, we have the 2023 and 2024, both taxes assessed and taxes receivable. Uh, that is not necessarily an update, but I would like to note that the 2025 data will be available in February. So when we give the next presentation on these little updates, we will have that information available to you to be able to compare. Number of facade improvements, sign upgrades, lighting installations that have been completed in the downtown area. And we do have an extensive list here to include King Shark, Latte Hana, Trailways, um, Brunos, as well as several others. Other projects that were completed downtown. Um, we have our Veterans Memorial, the installation of the benches and the flower boxes of flower pots along Oak Street. Um, thank you to Kibo Desa Beautiful for helping us with those projects.
Pecos.
Oh, sorry, Pecos Beautiful, sorry. Um, installation of the new street signs as well. Kelvin and his team have been, yes, um, have been great in helping us get that project off the ground and nearly complete. Number of facade improvements, signage upgrades, and lighting installations completed in the downtown area. So the new downtown parking lot project, um, that is expected to be completed in 2025. We are in the design phase, but that is still expected to be completed by year's end. And the two-year plan to have additional parking in downtown. Um, the locations have been identified and Holly and her team are working on that as well. Um, as well as the Christmas lighting along Oak Street and the museum park and the public wifi access in strategic areas downtown. I know that the downtown museum park was identified as a testing point for that. Moving along to collaborating with other community entities on potential development opportunities. So when we're looking at our total number of partnerships for different projects with community entities, local storefront and general grants that were given within the fiscal years, 2023 and 2024, we ended up with eight total, um, grants. And then 2024, 2025, when this presentation was last given, we had one, but we have added since then SS4A as well as, um, the police department. So we also have the Hidden Heroes Joint Entity Housing Project, which has the four different phases. We'll speak a little bit more about each of those phases and where they're at in completion or in, um, each phase of the project. We also have the County Waterpark Project, which the RFQ has been awarded for at this point in time. We have a broadband project and the two gas plants. So the Road Runner has been completed. Um, and then the second one, the Aperion, is breaking ground soon within 45 to 90 days. And we also have our sidewalk installation project, the Veterans Museum, and the Lincoln Street Extension. Um, so public-private partnerships, um, recently completed. We've had the Discovery School, which is now open, um, and has been operating, Freight Village, um, Housing Developments, and the Veterans Museum. So taking a closer look at the Hidden Heroes, um, project, we have Phase One, which is still expected to be a minimum of 48 units. Phase Two is still pending the amount of units that will be included there. Phase Three, at a minimum of 30 units, has met with the city regarding permitting and design questions. And then Phase Four is expected to have 12 units. Number of jobs obtained or created through the collaborative efforts. So we do have listed for 2023, 2024, um, several, uh, um, businesses that were opened in town. 2024, 2025, we do have construction jobs. And based on those projects, um, about 75 jobs that would be brought to the area. Personnel for the plant and refinery would be roughly 52 full-time employees for those projects. And construction of the gas and electricity plant and refinery would bring about 250. So external funding and grants that we have secured through collaborations. Um, we do have the Hidden Heroes, which was $6 million for Phase One, three and an additional four for Phase Two. $750,000 for the Pecos Freight Village Study and the initial engineering. $1.9 million was secured with the SS4A grant. And the breakdown of that, it would be a total project cost of $2,375,000. The funding requested was the $1.9 million, but the city contribution to that total project cost is going to be $475,000. Um, we have $183 million from the state of Texas newly created Texas Energy Fund for those gas and electricity plants. Um, and then also, we have $500,000 through the USDA, the Rural Utility Services Broadband Technical Assistance Program. Enhancing visitor revenue opportunities. So we do have updated numbers for our hotel occupancy rates. Um, we've added the 2024, 2025 pop revenue here. Um, and you can see that that is a decrease from the 2023, 2024 fiscal year of about almost 8%. Number of events or festivals aimed at attracting visitors. This slide specifically represents Cyclone and what is programmed or, um, already scheduled to be posted there. So over the next quarter, the next three months, they are expecting 11 more tournaments that they already have scheduled on the books. Um, and their projections show 3,500 visitors across those 11 tournaments and 330 room nights generated over the next six months. Other events, um, we've heard some of these earlier this evening. So Los Pesquitos Concert, they are estimating about 700 attendees and generating more than 90 room nights there as well. Um, they'll also be hosting in October, Oktoberfest, um, which will stretch over a weekend. So that'll be a multiple day event, as well as the Christmas tree lighting and events which will stretch through the month of December. Um, estimated about 800 visitors, which is roughly 100 more visitors than I believe they received last season for that event.
Do you think before you go forward, the estimate 700 attendees? Are you giving that number?
These numbers were directly reported from the Cyclone Ballpark staff. I believe they may have used, um, an economic impact calculator to come up with those numbers, um, but we can verify, yes.
Take it, take it, send it.
Any other questions? We're going to knock. All right, so other events that would be happening, um, in the city. Of course, we have our West of the Pecos Rodeo, um, Night in the Pecos, Fourth of July event, and we are aiming to bring in some additional small regional conventions to the area to capitalize on, um, attracting more visitors to the area. Attract businesses with new technologies. So the three plants for emerging technologies and the broadband fiber connection project that is ongoing. Stimulating economic growth through infrastructure development. So we do have a large list of different infrastructure projects here, most of which are already completed at 100%. Um, those that are not would be the Hector Pena Plaza, which we would estimate at about 10% now. They've started dirt work there. Um, the wastewater treatment plant, about 80%. New landfill is in the permitting phase, which takes about two years due to TCEQ processes. Um, and then the lift station, Middlebrook Sewer Line, which is about to go out the park. Increase in commercial property development near the municipal court. So the Aperion Gas Plant located at the new Tolliver Street Extension. We can see that that's a $250 million project to be completed next year. Um, the plat has been approved and the permits are in process for that project as well. Integration of infrastructure with private investment. Number of public-private partnership agreements signed. Okay, so we have the gas plant, um, the refinery, and the Hector Pena Plaza, which is located off 285. Um, these projects receive tax abatements to all three. And then we have the business friendly permitting and inspection process. So when we look at our processing times, we are still about 24 to 48 hours for basic permits. Those include gas, electrical, plumbing, fence, carport. Um, a little bit longer of a timeline for our commercial, um, projects, about one to two weeks. And then we do still host our interdepartmental plan review, which is scheduled weekly on Wednesdays. And the departments that are included in that meeting would be Public Works, Waterser Street, uh, and Community Development for building enhancements. Updated here on this slide, we do have a QR code that goes to our surveys um, for anyone who's coming in regarding permitting. We, um, we ask that they would like to complete the survey or encourage them to in order for us to track the business satisfaction um, and any number of complaints throughout that process. Identify and develop plans for areas of reinvestment. So we do have the reinvestment zones, the five, that were filed with the state, um, in 2024. Currently, 2024 is going to be the base year. And so at that point, $833,000 was cons, dollars was considered the market value. $144,000 of that was taxable due to the abatements, et cetera. And that is it? Any questions? This was the longest one, if that means. All right, thank you.
Can we go to the second session? And can we do these, or do we need to go and do?
Just got one, two, three, four, five, six to go.
Mayor, let's do, y'all are charged.
You want to do?
I'll give a little pretty deep follow-up to the question. Mr. Gonzalez, which presentation is he doing? No, he's just here for all of it. He's the one that's coordinated and has been overseeing all of this. I mean, he, what I'd like to give if, if, if we're going to postpone these is not a problem, but, uh, if y'all will second to see, get just a little bit of feedback from Tommy on what it costs, uh, if that would be okay.
Just knock them all out. I got all night.
Not me. What are we gonna do then? Are we gonna?
Y'all, y'all, get to y'all, my shoes missing.
Mayor?
Okay, that's fine. So let the record show, Art Arona is leaving at 8:50. So go on to item F6, presentation of implementation progress of goal two of the Town of Pecos City 2030 Strategic Goal. Strategic Plan Goal Two, Safety for City.
Mayor Council, Elizabeth Unwood.
Mayor Council, Elizabeth and Wiltshire Police. Mine is the Safety and Secure City goal of the city. And you can see, my team is still the same, and I want to recognize the team because without them being there, this wouldn't have really been possible, because each one of them has had a big input in what's happened. So, some other titles have changed. Edward De Leon is now the Communications Director. You can probably see on our Facebook and the city's website, he puts a lot of information, not just for the city, but the police department and CJC in there as well. Juan Vasquez, the Patrol Captain, really been instrumental the past few months, especially getting the new units. We have four more delivered today, so that's really coming along. Mary Carmen Wood, the Assistant Community Services Director. So, we've been working a lot of projects with her as far as the future of Besse and Haynes and where the police department's gonna fit in with that. Deandra Onchondo, the Assistant Finance Director, I call her the money lady. I've got to see her every project that we're gonna be involved in and see where we are as far as budgeting goes. Myself, because I'm probably kind of a control freak when it comes to some of this stuff, so I've gotta be involved somewhere along the way. Griffin, the Assistant to the City Manager, Mr. Lino, he's right in the mix with everybody. So, Josh Ortiz, Technician Team Lead. Him and Jesus especially, along with Ariseli and Sarah, they've been really instrumental the past two weeks. We got new body cameras, we got the new car cameras that are going in. So, they went through a really big implementation project recently. So, all of that's starting to roll out. And the ones that aren't pictured there, Karina Luna, she was recently promoted to our Assistant Jail Administrator, which is a position we had never had before. Adrian Marcus, he's our CID Lieutenant, but he's a man that wears a bunch of hats where he's at. And then Jessica Severo, she keeps up with the municipal court as far as citations, warnings, stuff like that that's been going through. So, I want to say this team's an amazing one to have to ensure that these goals that we set for ourselves are being met. And each person involved in the team have contributed throughout this year to make the efforts to success is what we're seeing. So, the increased public safety operational efficiency. Whenever I did this and presented it for this agenda, we had eight patrol units completed. As of today, we have four more, so it's up to twelve. The body camera and car camera implementation, it was done last week, so all of that's operational now. Officers have new body cams. With that, you'll see that we have no longer a server-based. It's kind of a hybrid right now until we run out the data that we need to in the server. And everything's gonna be cloud-based at this time. The facility has been under construction for a few weeks. You've seen it blocked off, you know, we're hoping that that process will kind of speed up and at least band-aid us for a little bit. I came to you with the resolution several months back when we had applied for a grant obtained for technology in the patrol units. And that's gonna be computers in the cars, that's gonna be cameras throughout the community, there are tilt, pan and zoom cameras. So, working with IT, with Josh and Jesus, we've really made a lot of progress. And we were successful in obtaining that grant for four-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand dollars. So, we're gonna get a half a million dollars' worth of technology and most of it's gonna be covered by this grant. So, we're really pleased with that. And two new dispatch radio consoles. The last time I was here, they were just going through the installation, well, now they're installed and operational. And with that, you can see in the photograph, most of the dispatchers, but we have fully trained. Everybody's licensed now through the state dispatch center. We only have one opening. Unexpected at the time when we started, the young lady had a baby now, and so she's gonna stay home with her baby, understand that. Working safe towards becoming a safe city in West Texas. Initially, I wasn't sure how I'd go about doing that, because along with the oil field, it's great for the economy, brings in the good and the bad. But it's not just the oil field workers. So, what we do is we try to include our citizens in some of that. So, with the Citizens Police Academy, we have fifteen people a ten. It's a ten-week course, and they're actually graduating tomorrow. We have a new jail administrator, he was hired last year in October. And Mr. Vince Rudebe, he's been amazing to take care of that jail. Great for us that he was already rehearsed and knew a lot about the federal system, because he was a warden with the federal prison here, as well as throughout the nation. He's been in different, in different federal facilities. So, he's very familiar with the martial contract. Speaking of the martial contract, myself and Mr. Lino recently negotiated that contract. It was final as of last Friday, and we got an increase that we were seeking out. So, we're proud of that, you know, another fifteen dollars higher than what we were getting paid. And the patrol and CJC communications, right now, we're doing interviews for both of those divisions. Both are meeting people. Again, our process, the background process is very lengthy, because we want you to get the bang for your buck. Because onboarding is extremely hard and it's very expensive. And if you don't get the right person, you just blew out money that you didn't need to. Mobile data terminals, license plate readers and PCZ cameras are gonna be installed during the next twelve months. Myself and IT are already working on some of those conversations with different vendors to see exactly what that's gonna look like. So, I know we're on a time clock. Once the grant went in place, as of September one, the wheels started going already.
Where do those readers go? Are they on the flock system?
They are on the flock system. And it's not just the readers, but the PCZ cameras are gonna be on the flock system as well. And we are fixing to do a demo with them. I call it the Eye in the Sky, so it's gonna be cameras on a trailer. We can haul out, install, say, a Cyclone during the Christmas tree lighting and the rodeo parking lots, that kind of stuff, just to kind of monitor, you know, stuff that happens. I wish I could have every place covered in town, but at times, it's just not, it's not feasible.
Are we planning to get more in the future?
We are planning, so. The good thing with this grant that we just got, you can apply for it every single year. And with that, you can apply to keep the lease agreement going, if you will, for these cameras, because they are on a lease. And we can add more takeaway to that grant. So, every year is not gonna be probably as big of a grant as I applied for, because this was gonna include the MDTs, which is the mobile data terminals or the computers in the cars. But every year, we plan to continue to apply for this grant. And eventually, you have cameras probably all around town. I think we're starting off with a good bunch, we're gonna have twelve to start with. And then six LPRs, which are gonna be the major thoroughfares coming into city of Pecos. But also a few problem areas, if you will, that we know we need to pick them up. And so, strengthening our community involvement, we continue to try to attend events that we can in the community. I know the last time I was here, I probably did the first half of what was going on. This is since April, we've done the health fair booth, which we distributed DNA kits and fingerprint kits for families. And we've done the senior parade, the rodeo parade, which is always a really big one. During the Fourth of July, we did a dunking booth. Again, Mr. Lino was probably the top money-earning guy and Mr. Conrad there too. Until we got one of the officers on there and it just went crazy. So, yes, and then we had the first pitch of the baseball bill season this year. One of our officers was asked to throw up that first pitch, the Officer Kenny Riles. Here's our stats that we were looking at. Last year, you saw twenty-three and twenty-four, this year, you're doing twenty-four and twenty-five. You can see the calls for service has increased about eight-point-eight-seven percent. And then, you see a twenty percent decline in accidents, which I'm proud of, because I feel it's due to our patrol division. Just being out there and really monitoring the area. Cedar Street always becomes a hot topic at every council meeting when there's people thinking that there's not enough being done on Cedar Street, but a majority of our citations unfortunately result from Cedar Street. Accidents did go down, reports written have gone down, and the arrests, about, about stationary, unfortunately. Citations written, you can see it's dropped a little bit. I'm gonna say that's probably due to being four officers short. Those four officers several years back would have made up for some of those numbers. And then the calls for service is just, you never know from year to year, it's gonna happen, as far as I know. Animal services, our animal control, I can't say enough about. You can look at the numbers from 2025, from 2024. So, you see the intake with Christie has been six-forty-six this year. Last year, we were at four-eighty-three. We're gonna say that's due to a lot of education that she does throughout the community. You can really see the work. She's really good on her Facebook to keep the community aware of what's going on. The adoptions stay pretty much about the same. Facility transfers, you can see how big of a number has changed right there. And when we say transfers, it can go from a plane that lands at our airport that she loads up dogs and cats on to ones that are, say, in El Paso during certain times of the season, like when it gets cold, you won't have as many of those transports. And the reclaimed animals, again, we're gonna say because of the computer chipping that she puts in there, that's really helped a lot with that. So, she's able to run the chips on these dogs to see who the owners are. So, we get a lot of reclamation out of it. Euthanized or died in care, it's gone up a little bit. Some of that is, there's parvo at times that comes through, or they come in and they're extremely injured, and there's not a whole lot she can do as far as to help them out. She's at a ninety-one to ninety-two percent live release rate. Last year, it was about eighty-six. And for that, you can see that our shelter's been deemed a no-kill shelter by the Best Friends Animal Society, showing that we've had twelve months save rate of at least ninety percent. Animal Control Supervisor Christie Wright, she did receive an award called the Force of Will Award for the work at the animal shelter. We now have three animal control officers, which they've done an amazing job, and we do have one kennel tech position open. And I'll give you pictures of them, they're, all three are amazing, they're doing a great job. They're all set to go to the basic animal control course, the two new ones anyways. And it's actually gonna be hosted in Midland this year, so it's very rare we get it that close. Usually, they have to go in the RV area. And, any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go to item F7, Presentation of Implementation Progress of Goal Three of the County of Pecos City 2030 Strategic Goal. Three, Promote Visual Image of Pecos.
Mayor Council, I'm not Cindy, no ma'am, I'm not, or partner in crime. Goal Three, Promote the Visual Image of Pecos. So, this is her team, it's Michael Baca, who is the Utilities Superintendent. Myself, Edward De Leon, the Director of Communications and Public Affairs. Philip Ontiveros, Pecos Pride Crew Supervisor. Holly Joraki, the Director of Community Services. Cindy Fuentes herself, Director of Operations. So, first, Goal One is to improve the visual impression of the community. We have the downtown street signs right there, you can see on the left-hand side on the picture. Those are the signs that Kelvin had put up, and they're really looking nice out there in downtown. Of course, we have the downtown fall banners. Of course, we replace those signs every season. We have fall, winter, summer, spring, if I'm not mistaken.
And rodeo.
No?
And rodeo.
And rodeo, of course, yes. And so, so that's pertaining to downtown. And of course, we have the fourteen self-watering flower plants that were provided by Keep Pecos Beautiful, as long, as long with the ten downtown benches, again, provided by Keep Pecos Beautiful. And one more thing about Keep Pecos Beautiful, they're great, they're doing a good job. And they also have two new, they're in Maxi Park, so. So, if you haven't seen it, one of them is near the splash pad, and the other one's where the old Christmas tree spot was at. And of course, we also have the municipal airport building renovation. You guys attended for the ceremony there, so, again. Very good job there. Goal number two, Set One Standard for Infrastructure Across the City. One of the big projects that was completed was the Eddie Street Project. I know that was a headache for, for many, but it came out nice. And so, we had a video to play, but it doesn't seem like it's shown, but if you go on Facebook, you definitely see the video itself. We have the North and East Side Group Seal Project. Those are all the streets, and I'm sure Holly and Cindy could talk more, a little more about the Group Seal Project itself. But again, that has been completed. Oh, there it is. Okay, nevermind, it's on. Alrighty. Next up, we have Goal Number Three, which is Establish Your Brand to Celebrate Pecos Identity. So, of course, continue to develop our identity to communicate more effectively with the audience. One of the examples we do, what we've started doing is more engaging social media posts. On your left-hand side, you have Taylor Swift album that we, we, that we were playing with. That second picture with the referee on the water tower, it was actually a good luck charm. Good luck charm text link or something like that. And it's like, like this post, and then follow our alert systems, or sign up for alert systems. And then, you know, your team gets more good luck on that game. I think it was the Cowboys versus Eagles game, if I'm not mistaken. On the top right, we have the National Book Day, again, just kind of, just more engaging social media posts. And of course, collaborating with our Pecos Bills. Wish them good luck as they were moving forward in their playoffs.
You got a plan for October third?
For October third? Mean girls. We might have something in the back pocket. Of course, we have the completion of branding, so we're still in progress to complete an official branding guideline for the city for internal and external use. We've already completed the external side of it, we're still working on the internal branding, which is in progress. Again, that's just more consistent formatting for memos, letters, customers, presentation slides. Again, we just want to make sure it's very consistent with our brand and our colors and our fonts and our logos. And so, again, these guidelines could be used for anyone, mostly for our media personnel as well. So, they can know how to spell our name and how to pronounce our name, our city name, and of course, using the right logos and colors and fonts and all that good stuff. So, again, we're still in the progress of building that official branding guideline. With this, of course, we kind of had to put this initiative on hold, which is the surveys for brand recognition. We wanted to finalize the branding guideline itself first, and then have some more additional research to identify and make sure we had the right set of survey questions that we need to ask and why are we asking it. And then the next step, we'll begin after the guideline's completed. And so, that's hopefully coming up soon. That's her presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentation of Implementation Progress of Goal Four of the County of Pecos City 2030 Strategic Plan. Goal Four, Enhance Pecos's Quality of Life Through Recreation, Culture and Education, Holly Joraki.
Mayor Council, Holly Joraki, Community Services Director. Goal Four is Enhance the Quality of Life Through Recreation, Culture and Education. Have a great team that has been assisting in identifying what they would like to see, what they'd like to add to our parks and recreation system. Mary Carmen, who probably realizes practically almost all the teams. Deandra as well, Cindy Fuentes, Michael Baca, Ishmael Mendoza, Philip Ontiveros, Josh Ortiz and Jonathan Sandoval. So, we put this together and have been working towards and completing several of the goals throughout the year, throughout the half-year, pardon me. Our goal obviously was to improve our park systems. As you see, improving the park systems means improving ballfields, adding bike trails, adding hiking trails, safe and accessible trails with connections to key spaces. We have delivered quality of life projects in a timely manner. These are a lot of the items that we have completed previously. The last fin recycled wind turbine benches, which are now out at both of our Rocket Park, pardon me, out at our Hero Plaza Park and at our Xerocosa Park. We have been adding, we're anticipating adding additional benches throughout the city as we grow these park systems. Completed installation of the new restrooms, new paint and skins for our veterans memorial parks, Static Loan, T-33 Shooting Star Plane. So, these are the other items that we had completed, delivering the quality of life in a timely manner, which was our playgrounds with the turf surrounds. The grant that we are still, actually, we were supposed to have an approval process completed in June of this year. It's still pending, but those dollars are still under our grant, and we are just waiting to get started on that project. New Christmas ornament, ornament installation at Maxi Park and our three main city thoroughfares. So, our goal is to improve our pathways and trails. Repair the damaged walkways. We've done that at Xerocosa, we pulled all of the brick pathways there and have replaced them. Add seating and shelters, more benches, picnic tables, shaded areas to improve comfort. We are in the process of, of planning and designing these locations at two of our parks, and we'll be bringing that back on the new, on the updated strategic plan. Upgrade the play areas, adding inclusive playground equipment. Again, within our new budget year, we're going to start looking at adding those more varied items for, for the community. varied items for, for the community as a whole. Lost my train, I've lost my term, my words there. But at the end of the day, uh, we're looking at adding some inclusive playground items for, uh, the smaller parks. Enhance our restroom facilities and encourage longer visits. The landscaping in our key areas across the city, public parks, open spaces, expand existing parks with additional trees, shrubs, flower beds, develop new mini parks and community gardens and underutilized spaces. So as we grow the different locations and add the different amenities, for instance, uh, when we're looking at adding our boot out there at one sixteen and I twenty frontage, we're going to be doing a beautification effort there as well. That's just one of the many areas that we are looking at. The streetscapes and sidewalks, Tolliver Roadway, we're in the process of creating a design plan for that. Our residential neighborhoods, establishing shared community green spaces for recreation and relaxation. We are updating our Bessie Haynes. Y'all have heard a couple, um, items tonight about Bessie Haynes Park. We're, we're very excited about it. Uh, this is going to establish just that. Vacant and underlies, uh, vacant and underutilized land, transform vacant lots into temporary or permanent green spaces. We are still working on that, um, as, uh, trying to find that land that's gonna be available, networking with people who may want to donate that land for a beautification effort. Oops. Am I going the wrong way?
You are. Fastest, I've heard you talk.
Yeah, I know. Well, somebody only gave me three minutes. So previously, in our twenty-twenty-four park metrics, we had, uh, clocked twenty thousand seven hundred people at, visitors at our Maxi Park. I'll stop it. Okay. The current metrics are gauged from March to August of twenty-twenty-five and I broke it down so y'all could see the change in, in the visitors that are attending our parks. From March, uh, just previous March, actually, was about ninety-six hundred. So went ahead and just added, uh, these six months here, March through August. You see in July, we had the most visitors of twenty thousand six hundred. That's obviously when we're holding our July fourth. Um, and we had over forty-five hundred attend on July fourth. So last year, I believe it was around twenty-five hundred is what we had clocked, and so that's remarkable. Uh, we had a, a, a bigger venue, larger display for fireworks. It was exciting. Uh, as we add these, the, uh, new amenities, excuse me, to our park, the visitors are coming. And so, you see it steadily grows. It drops off a little bit, obviously, you know, when, uh, the summertime starts, people go on vacation. Uh, but it's pretty steady. Our five-year budget plan, we've completed quite a few items in our budget plan and we'll be adding a few more. Uh, currently, we completed our restroom and landscape update, Montescape Park. Um, we have added irrigation and landscaping sod material. We are contemplating adding sod there since it seems to be taking a little longer than we anticipated to grow the environmental, environmentally friendly grass. Our thirteen-acre park design build is underway. The master plan is in process. As, uh, mentioned earlier, Bessie Haynes is having our second public meeting at the gym located on the east side on the grounds of where this particular master plan is going to, um, take place. It's exciting to see. They've come up with some wonderful ideas. I think that, um, the entire community will be excited about it, but I think the east side's gonna really be excited about it. They don't have to figure out how to cross town to go enjoy a park. Our, uh, carport addition for the Tolliver Parks building is still pending. Our park amenities at Municipal Parks has been completed. Parks replacement vehicle, we actually were able to add an additional vehicle. The baseball fields at Maxi Park has now taken on a whole nother, a whole nother, uh, discussion. That is now, uh, land that is being negotiated between, uh, the city and the county. Uh, but Mr. Lino has assured us that we are going to be able to bring those baseball fields either in that vicinity or take over some others. The Tolliver Disc Golf?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Three million dollars.
Pardon?
Uh, three million dollars. County already gave you three million dollars?
No, sir.
That's our estimated cost, if we were gonna do it ourselves.
So initially.
This is dollars a year.
Initially, um, councilman, initially, when it was just, um, them utilizing our soccer field, this was going to be, um, the compensation for that so that we could go in and reinvest it and then rebuild. Uh, but that obviously has changed a little bit. The Tolliver Disc Golf is pending. We are waiting on some improvements in the Tolliver Street area before we step back into it. I know everybody's been waiting very patiently, um, but there are several factors that we want to make sure are in place before we go back in. The walking trail and pavilions for Tolliver, that is actually pending. That's one of the designs that will be coming to council hopefully by November so that, uh, we can provide that plan to the county that, and in anticipation of them helping us be, you know, a stakeholder and provide the support to get that underway. Veterans Memorial Pond, uh, we actually met with, um, the county representative today, who, uh, we were just speaking of options to get the water back in that pond and what we need to do to the pond itself. It clearly needs repair. He understood that, um, we were not in a position to jump on it right away. But I believe we're on our way to moving forward and getting that, hopefully. He's hoping to have it accomplished. Mr. Lino asked him if there was any way possibly by the end of October, which would be great, prior to Veterans Day. Um, so fingers crossed that we can hopefully have, uh, that budget completed by then.
What's going on with the block? It's been leshing for a while because we, uh, the materials that were in there, we've always had signs to tell people to stay out, but nobody knows how to read. So we've had animals and, you know, kids and everything in there, and so there's been a bunch of tears in it. So we're looking at a permanent solution, a little while, but we're, uh, we're paying that. We're also talking about possibly putting decorative ornamental fence around it, like a two-foot, or something, you could be proud of it. So that's the conversations that Holly and I had with the two Russians.
The new holiday banners, uh, so we did, uh, finalize and receive our new holiday banners that are actually gonna go into the downtown area. These are gonna be focused on the holidays. Uh, they're going to actually replace where all of the, the current banners are placed and we're gonna wrap them around all the way to the front of City Hall and along Third, Second, and First Street. The new landscaping in multiple locations has been completed, so we've all, we've added additional landscaping at the Meadowbrook Neighborhood Park as well as, um, uh, the Hero Plaza Park and Cactus. So all of these places, all of these parks that we've added this landscaping in the form of, um, currently grassy and irrigation in hopes of trying to grow it. We are waiting to see if we're gonna have a good return on that. If not, as Montev Rodrigo's, we're going to then move, uh, forward with placing sod out there. Both the Meadowbrook and the Cactus Park are actually also going to be, um, we're gonna be utilizing our GIS planner who's going to be, um, putting some designs together for us there, help us out a little bit, um, just kinda think outside the box. She has some great designs. I can't wait for you to see the depot designs, uh, that she's already created, so. But, uh, for, for all of the infrastructure that was completed. Any questions? Thank you.
Item F nine, presentation of the implementation progress of Goal Five of the County Pecos City Twenty-Thirty Strategic Goal. Goal Five, promote open and consistent communication.
Mayor Council, Edward Leon, Director of Communications and Public Affairs. Uh, Goal Five, promote open and consistent communication. I promise it's the last time I'll be speaking tonight. Um, he, so I am taking over Goal Team Five from, um, from Lori, uh, who was our former HR Director. Um, again, there's me and myself, our co-lead will be Sarah Nichols, she's the Director of Human Resources now, and Josh, of course, with our IT team, and Marissa Utilized Billing, Heather, our Assistant City Manager, Griffin, Assistant City City Manager, and Clarissa Bion, uh, who is our Specialist for our department. Alright, that's Montev Reed. I apologize for that. Um, so we have Goal Five point one, so it's to set a climate of trust, respect, and team spirit among the city council, uh, city staff and community. So first, we have our roping the agenda. Um, this is a two-to-three-minute Instagram reel, coming to Facebook soon, um, summarizing our city council meetings, just kinda highlighting the, the key council items that was presented at, at the recent, at the most recent city council meeting. Uh, again, this is just to really encourage the community to, to attend and just have more of an online engagement. Um, and they could just obviously see our agenda in minutes online afterwards. So that's, that's new again, and that's on Instagram, but hoping to get it on Facebook soon. Um, after that, we have our budget, uh, budget workshops, which were held in July twenty-twenty-five, um, for council to analyze the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven budget. Um, and this was held with council and our city staff, so, um, again, just a great, great collaboration, um, program that we've done there. Of course, we want the community engagement, so for example, we have the Bessie Haynes, uh, Shape the Future Park Project, um, that happened in August, and we also included a survey for, for the feedback, uh, of what residents wanted to see for the park. And now we have the second community event that we've mentioned about maybe five times today, um, and that's happening on September thirtieth again. So just another way of just getting the engagement and the event for our community. And not only that, we also do our post-community event surveys. Um, so it's just really to improve the planning, uh, for, for events such as the Easter Stravaganza that we started last year, or our first year was last year, when we take it over, and also our Fourth of July. Um, and in the next slide, I'll show you a little bit of examples of that as well. Um, great feedback, again, is just, uh, just improving it and making it better for our community. Um, we have the pu- new Public Information Officer that will be really helpful with us. They will be handling all, all PV-related matters. Uh, they'll be working alongside our, our department as well, and this was, this will really alleviate, um, a lot of the workload that we currently have. Um, currently, we are supporting twenty-plus, uh, departments, uh, you know, and it's a two-person team, so. Uh, we're trying our best and I get, and I, I, again, our PV-related matters is, they could be, um, very big and, and a lot for, for us to handle too. So again, this, this new PIO will definitely be a huge use for us. Um, some examples, again, really tiny to breathe, so I apologize. Um, let's start off with the Fourth of July. You know, a lot of people have mentioned a drone show, uh, some bands and activ-, uh, some more bands and activities, more nineties country music, and the fireworks show, um, live music. Um, so again, we, we are taking all this information and trying to have better art events for the future. Um, on the left-hand side, we do have our Easter Stravaganza. Again, that was our first year. Um, we got, we got some positives, some negative, um, comments on there, of course. It's more of the organization a part of the, of the event, and so we're gonna try our best to do better next year with that.
Can you see on that screen or what? Let me just read something.
Yeah, go ahead. I had to, uh, block out, um, a portion of that information 'cause, uh, it had, um, profanity, so. Give some, I don't know if you're gonna give some to me?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Just picking up eggs anywhere, so overall, much appreciated. Um, again, we, we, we like it real. We, we like it honest and we, we, so this is gonna better our events in the future. Um, currently, we have about, well, including our Pecos Youth Advisory Events, we have about twenty-four events that we kinda handle, so. Alright, there you go. You're gonna zoom out? There you go. Alrighty. And then of course, just kinda, how did you hear about the festival? And we, we tracked that as well, just to see what, we have to spend more of our time, um, advertising on, and so Facebook, obviously, is fifty-two percent, right? Um, but you also have the other ones that are still, still important, so. Speaking about our social media, um, just kinda wanna get some, some numbers down here. Um, and these are numbers from July twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-twenty-five. Um, we had three hundred and fourteen new followers on Facebook from, again, from July twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-twenty-five. Um, in the previous slide, we had a total of six thousand four hundred eighty-nine. Now we have seven thousand five hundred and seventy-one, and that number hasn't been updated, so we're up to seven point six, uh, like, I think, seven thousand six hundred fifty-something. So, again, just making strides on that. Um, we posted sixty-one posts during that time, um, which is like twenty posts per month. Again, we're just trying to be very engaging and, uh, committed into providing the information for our residents. Um, last, in the last quarter, uh, we had eight hundred and ten thousand five hu- five hundred and fifty-eight views over the last quarter, so that just includes all the pictures and all the videos that we, that we have, uh, so pretty impressive numbers. Instagram, we get a little, you know, a little more down, um, we, we've noticed, of course, uh, we gotta do better on Instagram and we tried doing new, like reels and funny reels, and, uh, if you haven't followed us on Instagram yet, please do. Um, again, just trying to make it more engaging. Uh, we do have a total of followers of a thousand one hundred and thirty-four. In the previous presentation, nine hundred and four. Uh, during the month of July and September, we had forty-two new followers and seventeen posts, and then had twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty views over the last quarter. Um, LinkedIn, uh, I could only get information for the last thirty days. Um, this was updated on September twenty-fifth. Total followers, three hundred and seventy-five, some, some neat, um, a- analytics, twenty point three percent, uh, are from Pecos, ten point four percent are from Midland Odessa area, and nine point six percent are from DFW, so. Again, just variously, analytics, we had seventeen, seventeen new followers, ten posts, and a thousand four hundred and sixty-two impressions. Um, again, so whenever we see the, the survey results from the events, obviously, they're, it's more, uh, seen on Facebook, and so we tr- we really try to focus on Facebook more, uh, but we're trying our best to continue with the rest of the social media game.
You're getting your message across. I've got a lot of positive feedback on that, so you're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
You literally got fifty percent of the population, it was Facebook, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to do better, so there's more new things coming our way.
One thing, before we get off subject here, I mean, that I've always told you about is like to see more, uh, informing the public, uh, you know, every department in the future start informing of the basic stuff. I know we got our paper handouts here. If you wanna come in and ask questions about how, how the process is for like a mobile home or something, setting up stuff like that, but you can kinda start doing some kind of programs or videos to educate what your highest priorities are feedback-wise, right?
Yes, sir.
How like you did the hot texts?
Yes. So, kinda like roping the agenda too, we had a segment for Behind the Spur, and so that is in the works currently, so.
Good.
Awesome. Uh, and then, so for like, kinda like the news, uh, the traditional media, we have the TV of Alert Seven, News West Nine, Big News Two, the big ones, uh, radio station at KIUM, fourteen hundred, and the newspaper at Pecos Enterprise. Uh, we try to do a good job of sending information to all these, uh, traditional media, uh, locations. And again, sometimes it bites and sometimes it doesn't unfortunately, and, but all we can do is just keep trying. Um, we're, and we're still gonna send them out no matter what. We're, we're not gonna feel defeated in that as well. Um, so for, we also have some, you know, our website and our app and even QR codes. So with our website and app and QR codes, we have them updated weekly. Uh, we make sure they're updated weekly. And we also include, uh, not only our city events or activities or meetings, we also include the rest of the entities, uh, local entities, um, around Pecos. And so, for the QR codes, we have our park benches, uh, the benches that are made from wood minnows. We, there's a QR code on them that people can scan and it goes directly to our city news and events. So again, just another way to expose, um, you know, our city, um, including the water bills. Uh, February twenty-twenty-five, we highlighted to register for the, the alert messaging system. We send out, um, again, some information with that, with the QR code itself on the water bills. Again, just trying to, trying to increase the, uh, the, the number of sign-ups for those alert messaging systems. Again, just trying to, trying to increase the, uh, the, the number of sign-ups for those alert messaging systems. Uh, and those alert messaging systems include our, our non-emergency closures, kind of like the roadways, uh, the water leaks and all that, um, and of course, we will use it if, you know, uh, if there's a, a bigger emergency for that. Um, one of our other projects that we've completed was our website redesign. If you haven't seen it, make sure you do, it's at www.pecoxtx.gov, and I haven't moved it. Oh, no, I did, um, it's easier to navigate and access, I don't think I have the slide on here, but.
Back to the water?
Yes.
Do you guys have a point, like if somebody's deleted one on their water bill, and it would send messages to remind them?
Oh, I'm not sure on that, so this is more for like, uh, for like, if you get a sheet, you have the QR code to sign up for our alert system, but.
The reason I ask, I got three calls on that this week, where people's credit cards expired, and their water got shut off, and I'm like, it's just a nature piece, but you know, uh, stuff like that, you know, little small things, right? I mean, I'm not, we're not here to police baby people, but I'm just saying that, you know, why did I get cut off? And I'm like, your credit card expired.
You do get text reminders, and you do after, not do, I'm not sure about this, I have to check on that.
I was wondering if I had to give those alerts incorporated to the system, so.
Maybe that's a good idea. I guess I don't have the slide, but again, visit our website, www.pecoxtx.gov, it's really neat. Um, so five point three, uh, to promote a well-balanced customer service philosophy. Um, previously, we had a, a, uh, group for this, a committee for this. Um, however, we're really trying to focus more of our vision, our mission, and our core values, and our slogan, of course, um, for our staff. We really want them to, to really, really, um, what's the word? It just, you know, to, to use it every day. Um, but anyway, some customer service initiatives we have, we have some, uh, beginning stages of customer staff training across departments. So Sarah had brought this up, our co-lead, uh, she really wants to improve on, you know, kind of some, some phone transfers and, and customer knowledge, um, just so we won't be, so the customer won't be waiting on us, and to know when, where, uh, who to transfer it to on those calls. So again, um, Sarah's gonna be leading that program, um, of course, updating our phone extensions, uh, again, to reduce the wait time, uh, the wait times to find the correct extension, stuff like that. Uh, reporting potholes, as, as, uh, Mr. Kelvin mentioned, uh, it's a putt-up-hole program, so this is in the beginning stages as well. We've already finished the, the portal, as you mentioned, but we are wanting to promote it in a cute, funny way, let's just say. Um, of course, the Let's Talk Trash and Connect with Code, that's new. Um, residents have any questions, uh, about the landfill or code enforcement, they can always come to City Hall first Friday of each month. Um, Quatrik surveys, um, those, I know, uh, Ms. Savannah had mentioned that earlier with the permits, uh, Department Satisfaction surveys, and we use Quatrik for that, and they get reports, uh, every now, uh, every quarter, um, just to see how they're doing. Um, and then one of the other customer service initiative is the Open Door Policy, uh, for administration supervisors. Um, just so, you know, uh, they, they feel welcomed by our administration and our supervisors, and this is for our staff as well. Um, some things that we're doing to enhance the internal communication and employee engagement. Um, so Griffin is in charge of the Pecos Posts, and we are doing some enhancements coming up next month, right, Griffin?
Yes.
Um, we are making sure our employees' birthdays have pictures, and just so they can recognize who's who. Um, again, we have, uh, about a hundred and eighty staff, and of course, it's a little hard for us to know one another. So with the Pecos Post and pictures, you know, especially with their birthdays, and I'm sure people love to see themselves on, on a, on a post like that, and so we're, we're doing that. Um, new hires as well with pictures, just to see who's, who's who, um, and recognizing achievements, um, some, you know, certifications and trainings and all that good stuff. And we've done a survey for the Pecos Posts, just to see if it was effective, and some of the, uh, the results were, um, more than great. So, so that's why we're, we're gonna continue Pecos Posts and doing these enhancements because of those surveys. Um, some, uh, HR initiatives that they've already started are the monthly birthday goodie bags, uh, that started in August twenty twenty-five. Um, that, that, or now we have the monthly anniversary good bag, goodie bags, and that's coming soon. And of course, we have the intern and employee appreciation luncheon in August. Um, another thing with the HR, for the monthly birthday goodie bags, they also have a little celebration down here downstairs, uh, for them. And that's every month. Uh, one of the cool things that we began are the committees. Um, I wanted to get everyone involved with our events or with any activities that we're doing, and I wanted everyone's decision, I wanted everyone's input. Um, and so I first began that with the rodeo parade, where we built our rodeo float. Um, we had everyone's decision in that, what, what things to give away, uh, what candy, what, what was it gonna look like, all that jazz, and it was, it was nice, it was a great, uh, group effort. Um, really surprised me because a lot of people are so creative, and you just don't know it until you, you're in this type of situations. Uh, our next one's kind of, uh, our Halloween Town, um, so for the Halloween Town merchants, uh, Halloween Town, uh, we're participating that, we as the city hall, um, and so again, just want to get their input, and just to see how we can, um, put on this event for the community. And, uh, again, it's just, it's been nice, it's been very, very nice. Future plans we have, we have some baseline staff satisfaction surveys, um, just to see how staff, you know, are they satisfied? Do they like working here? What can we do differently? I know we've already began doing a survey for incentives, what can we do differently? Um, again, we just want to get everybody's input, we want to listen, we want to make sure they're being listened to. And so, again, so far, it has been, has been, uh, we've been doing a good job about that. The Staff Swap Project, which is currently on hold, just because of the goal directed transition, um, I'm still looking forward to that. And that's when we, we have one staff members, uh, one staff member from a department, uh, go work for another department for maybe a day or two, just to see what, what it takes. Yeah, of course, it's nothing too crazy, we're not gonna send, you know, myself to the, yeah, myself, right? I'm not gonna go work, yeah, I'm not gonna go work at the, or PD, right? Yeah, I don't think they'll give me a gun anyways. Um, but you know, so still, we're, we're looking forward to that program. I think it'd be neat, um, again, just because of the goal directed transition, uh, we took a pause on that, but we're, we'll be sure to, to, uh, start it, start it back up. Alrighty, then we have five point five, the strength, strength, strength in messaging opportunities. So, so for some media relations, we are planning to visit Midland Odessa. I think I told you, uh, Councilman Carrasco, that we were gonna plan on going to Midland Odessa, just to kind of build a stronger relationship. I feel like we don't, and again, they don't really come out here so far, and we try everything just to send them information, and again, sometimes it bites, sometimes it doesn't. Unfortunately, the negative news is usually what they bite on. Um, but still, we're planning on doing some visitations over there to the Midland Odessa, uh, in the next month, hopefully, uh, just to, again, to build those stronger relationships with them. Um, again, they, these guys, they kind of leave the, the job every six months, you know, it's kind of like they're, they do it for six months and they get out. Uh, they go to a bigger news station, maybe. Um, of course, updating the news packages for outlets to use if travels and issues, so, uh, making sure they have the, the ability to view our videotapes that we may have, our photos that we may have, just so it could be easier for them to use, again, if they are not able to come to Pecos. Um, some for, some, for the emergency messaging and coordination, so we've, uh, implemented the Civic Plus Alert Messaging for faster, more efficient communication. Um, again, I strongly encourage everyone to sign up for those alert messages. Of course, the county has iPOS, where it's kind of like those amber alerts you get, that public safety alert, um, they're the ones that handle that, so they have that, uh, messaging, uh, capability of that as well. I've held an initial meeting to do a joint effort, you know, with the school, the school district and county communications, uh, during those community, community-wide, wide emergencies. Of course, our staff is one or two depart, uh, per people for the departments, so we want to see how can we help each other in the long run, especially in those bigger, bigger, uh, emergencies, whether that's in writing press releases, getting footage, setting up for the press conference, whatever it may be. Um, again, so that meeting has already been held, and we're looking forward to, uh, meeting again in the next month, October third. Uh, so that's happening, and of course, we still have our Coffee Clash Program. Um, we, we want to introduce, we want to make it different, we want to definitely introduce topics like the boards and the responsibilities, kind of like how we deal with the hotel occupancy taxes on September tenth. Um, I think that was needed, and of course, topics like the permits and, you know, what kind of different permits we need to get, and why do we need to get them, and all that, uh, information someone may need to know. Um, but yeah, so again, we, we just try to make sure our message comes across at every possible venue. Uh, a little more, uh, we have some event analytics and outreach. Of course, we're using the placer.ai to track visitors, as Holly mentioned, at an event, which was the Fourth of July, we had four thousand, more than four thousand visitors, uh, that evening, so it was great, again, just kind of seeing, um, what's the trend on that? Are we doing a good job? Are we getting more people to come to our events? Um, creation of the CBB, of course, under the city, um, this is really gonna help out our local, regional, and national outreach as well. Um, we're gonna continue to advertise via our local radio and newspaper, and of course, sending events and activities through our alert messaging system with sign-up links for residents, uh, as well. And then we just recently, uh, Savannah had, um, requested to do a hotel survey, uh, for the Pecos Hotels here, obviously in Pecos, um, to better understand the hotel needs and services and what's needed for them, but, yeah. I think that's, that was a lot, yeah. Any questions?
No, uh, I know you guys put a lot of energy, research, and time behind this, so you did a really good job, thank you. I know some of, uh, people are tired, but this was a lot of work and that went behind it. So you did a really good job explaining in detail what's going on, and I like it, thank you.
Okay.
I have ten presentations of the implementation progress of Goal Six of the County Pecos City Twenty-Thirtieth State House. Goal Six is Sound Governance, Governance and Fiscal Management.
Mayor and Council, Goal Six is Sound Governance and Fiscal Management. For Goal Six, our team, pictured from left to right, is, alright, is Ms. Amherst Boskes, Ms. Estella Munoz, myself, and of course, our team lead, Ms. Deandra Enchongo. The first sub-goal is to develop a five-year budget forecast and a capital improvement plan. And of course, um, the five-year budget forecast does show that both our revenues and our expenses are expected to increase over the next five years. And of course, that's, um, that comes from data from the last, from the previous five years. So, by, this is something we review and update annually. So by doing this, we can make sure that we're ensuring that the financial resources are going to be there, and they're gonna be aligned with our planned capital projects, um, such as our new city landfill, the expansion of our water system, the wastewater treatment plant, Cyclone Phase Two, and all these, whether it's through grants, whether it's through funding through USDA, through the Texas Water Development Board, or through revenue, or through our revenue sources. Um, the next sub-goal is for us to be reviewing and aligning our city ordinances. As mentioned before, and as you know, um, one of the main things we've implemented is bringing before you our annual, uh, Masterpiece Schedule ordinance, and making sure that we're gathering data and reviewing and making sure they're in line, and still customized to Pecos. Because I, first, we compare to everyone else, and then at the same time, we want to make sure this is what works for Pecos. And believe it or not, we have a lot of other communities that are always reaching out to us, asking how we do things, how our ordinance, what our masterpiece schedules look like, and et cetera. And then you'll see that in two thousand twenty-three, we did update two ordinances, which was not enough. And then in two thousand twenty-four, we had the opportunity to update eight. As of today, we've updated five ordinances, and we do have additional ordinances that we are actually currently gathering data and preparing to update, and we'll be bringing those before Council.
You got the list of ordinances on the next slide?
I don't, but I can get those before, I can get those before.
Did you send them to my?
The next sub-goal is to recruit and retain a skilled workforce. Um, one of the primary ways we do this is through our summer internship program, which Griffin actually had the opportunity to revamp. He turned every aspect of this internship into a learning experience to prepare them for their future careers. He gave them feedback during the interview process, how to fill out the application process, and then, of course, on the exit interviews. Um, this year, we actually had, I think, one of the most turnouts, we had thirty applications. By the time we went to go interview, we had twenty-five, we tried to interview every single person, whether they're gonna, whether we have the money for them or not, we interviewed every single one so that they can get that experience. Out of the twenty-five interviews, we ended up hiring twelve summer interns. Out of those twelve, six were actually college-aged students already in college or going to be attending a college, and seven were returning to high school. Um, and as y'all know, from the last time I gave this, uh, a bunch of our current employees actually came from the, actually participated in the summer internship. So we do have nine full-time employees, and of course, the one contracted employee was our, uh, city attorney that came, he participated in one of the summer internships. Another way we retain the skilled workforce is through professional development. We have many different ways of doing that, one of the ones that really sticks out is, uh, our, is that we've been sending employees to become certified public managers. Last year, we had three complete this certification, and this year, we have three more on track to complete their certification in December. The next sub-goal is implementing leading-edge practices. Um, one of the ways we're doing this is by reviewing and updating policies. Some of the policies that are currently being updated and will be brought before Council is our Police Department Policy Manual. I know that's something Lisa's been working really hard on, and I don't know if y'all remember, but she brought a binder one time that's like, made big, maybe two, but you'll be seeing that. Another one is our employee handbook, um, the purchasing policy, the investment policy, um, and our, um, city incentive, um, program, which HR has a survey out right now, trying to ask and get some feedback and opinions from the staff on what they like and what they don't like, and if they have ideas that they'd like to see. Another way we do this is through our training sessions. Now that we have a new HR director, she is working on trying to, uh, get training out there and make that something we can do in-house. I know our next training we have set up that she sent out is a Safety and Risk Management Training. Um, that came from some of the feedback from our safety committee, um, that meets. And this year, those trainings are gonna be hosted in Odessa and Midland, so hopefully, we'll get a lot of staff or some staff sent to either one of those locations. Um, and also, if you remember, uh, about two years ago, the city was one of six recipients to receive an Award of Excellence in government, government finance from the Government Finance Officers Association. Um, the city won this award by putting artificial intelligence to work. The reason I bring it back up is because if you remember, um, the city was using robotic process automations and software robots to process our daily reconciliations, which saves staff about thirty-two hours a month, and it also eliminated errors. Another way was through processing our sanitation tax monthly, which saves staff, I think, about six hours a month. Uh, so our next project, uh, is to implement another RPA and hope, and still in financing through one of, through our AP invoice programs. So that's another goal we have that we want to get going. The next sub-goal is to ensure financial stability and accountability. And as you know, the budget process is year-round, it never stops, we're always in budget mode. Um, so next month, we'll be implementing and monitoring our new twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget, which does reflect an annual operating budget of a little more than thirty-nine million, and a capital budget of approximately twenty-two million. So what this means is now finance will begin having year-end. So what this means is now finance will begin having year-end and beginning of Q-one meetings with all the different staff. Our final sub-go is succession planning and implementation. And as you know, the city is big on grow your own. If there's something we really have to focus on, we're rules, so that's what we're doing. We have filled several leadership positions within our organization. Um if you can see here from left to right, we have Miss Sarah who was promoted to human resources director, Mary Carmen, who was promoted to the assistant community services director, Miss Deandra Enchondo, our new assistant finance director, Miss Wendy Lujan, the city secretary, Edward Deleon, the director of communications and public affairs. And then also in our police department and our um CJC, Miss, as mentioned in one of the previous um presentations, we have Miss Karina Lujan, who is now the assistant jail administrator. Brian Ramos, he was promoted to a patrol sergeant. And then we have Derek Dominguez and Monica Navarete, who are now CJC corporals, and Mr. Alonso Hernandez, who is a CID sergeant. Another way we also accomplish this is by supporting ongoing education and job-specific training. And that's it for goal six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to Adam F. presentation of the implementation progress of goal eight of the county Pecos City twenty thirty strategic goal. Goal eight is create a resilient, sustainable community. Ace's comments.
Mayor Council, last and probably least on. I have, I have lots of slides than everybody else does, but uh I like to see all that progress, especially the technology pieces. Uh goal teammate, create a resilient, sustainable community. This is a lot of my team, different parts of the project will be used by, by a lot of the teams. I have a little bit of a diverse, for the water side, of course, Edward in the communications and public affairs side. I need to update his title. Um our facilities team, GIS and landfill as well, and finance represented also. So for this one, uh stabilize neighborhoods through engagement and capital improvements. The benches were installed sometime back. Uh this is something that I uh brought up the last time. It's just something that kind of a refresher there. Um monthly event still continues, the Pecos Carers Roll-Up Program. Uh we have the bi-annual cleanups events hosted by the city staff, which have, uh I think that somebody mentioned and showed the trophy, Edward did. The town halls that have been had for RV park fees, permit processes and other other situations. And I think there's some in place also planned coming up. Um Pecos proud through maintaining arterial roadways for cleanliness. And then there's the expansion of of the extra positions there coming up um to to further, for those efforts. The new HVAC system has been installed with a central control system here at, on the first floor. Uh this was a few, few weeks ago whenever city halls closed on Friday, they, they finished that up. Lights still continue to be changed, retrograded to LED throughout the building. Motion sensor lights um in splash pad and restroom facilities. One thing I didn't include on here was uh kind of to the point of the, the water usage. I'll start on this next slide before I talk about that, the, the water usage. There's a, a portal that we can get through, that we've been trying to get through our building system, where feel a little bit more proactive for the, the community. They can set up alerts where it links up our, our smart metering system with our utility billing system. And when people go and pay their bills, there's a portal that uh allows them to see their water usage. They already have a basic view of that. Previously, the, our vendor didn't really support, didn't talk to our smart metering company. And so they've started to do that since then. So now there'll be a portal where people can set up alerts when they have unusual usage. We're looking into that. It's not something we're, we're moving forward just yet. We're just trying to see how viable it is. It's still fairly new to both vendors, so. The developing emergency water outage plan, that's a, a plan that I've been, uh Tommy's been helping uh me with and trying to assess the current gaps, um along with the mass notification system to, to help alert the community. Defining the roles and responsibilities, of course, also earlier tonight, the BlackRock automation, helping us with the SCADA and, and clearing up some of those things so we can keep up with monitoring. And then the, the response plan that, that would be uh need to have for internal and external communications. The water conservation and drought contingency plan was passed by council in April of twenty-four. It's uh increasing the wa, efficiency of water use and reduce water demands without, without hopefully affecting the population as much. So that includes things that'll happen if, where, where we get water from, where, where they could go to, um just all the, the processes there. So, so that we can try and, when, when we have, if we ever have to go into something like that, we're, we're more prepared for it than just trying to figure it all out as it's happening. Short and sweet. Any questions? Thank you.
So we are going to go back into executive session. It is nine fifty-seven PM.
Was on the presentation.
Open session, it is 10:51. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session? No? Okay, discuss items for the next city council meeting.
Oh, I talked to me.
Be scheduled. Anything else for next meeting? No. So we're gonna adjourn, it's 10:51 PM. Good night.